Twenty down planning commission please come over. We welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand for the pledge to the flag. George please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect the members that are present. Each member should have received the draft minutes for February 26, 2018. Is there any corrections or additions?
Mr. Chairman, I did add my name to the second paragraph of the March 26 minutes so that it says, "Planning Director," we correct, instead of just, "Planning Director reviewed."
Okay, thank you.
That's been tweaked.
Nothing additional, Chairman.
Will be approved.
Second.
All those favors, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Who's likewise, Carrie? She'll also receive the March 26, 2018 minutes, draft minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to those?
No second.
I move that they be approved also.
Any further discussion? All of those favors, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Who's likewise, Carrie, thank you. Action items for tonight, Carroll County Annual Report. Jim, you want to give us a start on that and then we'll...
Sure. Well, we do this about this time every year, so I work with the county planning staff and review our agendas, minutes, and any projects that we've given preliminary, final approval to in terms of site plans and subdivisions, also any changes to zoning ordinances or things that would affect our pattern of development. So, once the county works through that with all the municipalities, they assemble the countywide report and of course for the county at large. So, this evening we have Arco Sen with us to present the Tawney Town portions of the annual report and I think he's got some information to pass out to you guys. And I did email a file out, I'm hoping I know some had some trouble opening it, I don't know if that was the case for anybody, I hope not, but so if you got a chance to preview it, great.
Thank you.
If not, these are the, this is the part we're going to be voting to approve, so. Yep, that'd be great.
Well, good evening commissioners. What I handed out are excerpts of the annual report that relate to Tawney Town. Jim was very helpful, he coordinated with me and gave me the information I needed to put together for our 2017 annual report and between the beginning of April till now, I didn't get any issues or any changes that needed to be made or any additions that needed to be made. So, I'm hoping that if everything looks good, we can get the approval letter signed and I can move forward with the process and bring it up to our county commissioners as I move forward with the report.
Okay, does anyone have any comment or...
Are there any specific highlights you'd like to kind of pinpoint for us to focus on or...
Nothing in particular that jumps out to me, the information I receive, everything seems clear. I didn't see any development issues or any problems going on in Tawney Town.
I went through it and I didn't notice anything that jumped out. Anyone else?
I didn't notice anything myself.
So, we're looking for approval on this, right Jim?
Yes.
Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
Does that move?
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Other discussion? Any comments from the floor? What was the favor of the motion of approval, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed likewise? Carrie, thank you. Do you have one typed up to sign?
We have a letter for you to sign if, remember before we leave this evening.
Okay, great.
I'll leave it on top of the stack.
Next item on the agenda, revised development plan, request for site plan waiver, LP Enterprises. We're talking about the...
Hitchman.
Hitchman, thank you.
I received a message from Mr. Pino this afternoon, he was not able to attend this evening, so he asked if we could push this off until the May meeting. He had a family emergency come up today, so he was not able to come this evening. Short version, the, as I noted in my report, with the requirements of State Highway Administration and difficulties getting stormwater management and the, basically they hit rock and had to come up with some alternative stormwater management plans, the project does not look like it's practical for him to pursue at this point. We did allow him to put down gravel for a small portion of the lot that they purchased with the understanding that that would be included in the site plan, which it was, but of course we didn't foresee the site plan being retracted because of state highway requirements and stormwater difficulties. So, we're kind of left with this area that's gravel right now and that was going to be the subject of his request to waive the site plan requirement because the portion that's in gravel is small enough that it doesn't warrant stormwater management or grading or erosion and sediment control or any of those things. So, that's what he's going to be here next month to talk about. So, I guess you have an extra month to kind of ponder the idea, maybe take a look at the site from the, it's on the, basically adjacent to the existing site, just up the hill a little bit.
Is that where he has the little flag stuck in?
I think, I think that's where they were test pitting, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the little flags are right now.
Right around 194, as you, as you look at the undeveloped lot. So, it looks like that's going to be the outline of it. So, is he planning on blacktopping that then or we...
Yes, that would be, that would be blacktop like the rest of the site would be and it is on a separate parcel, so there are some factors to consider with that. But again, if you want to take a look before next month's meeting, take a look down there, see what you think about it and we'll listen to his case next month.
Alright, next item, presentation of the concept site plan request for the Tannery Barn, 61 Fragrance Street. Get us started on that before we ask for...
Okay. Right, and we do have the property owners and CLSI with us this evening to, CLSI is the engineer obviously, and the plan is to convert the barn that's currently a single family residence into a small events venue utilizing the existing patio that's in the rear and also utilizing a shuttle service to address parking. As we've talked about off and on for the last couple of months, existing buildings in the downtown business district are exempt from our usual parking requirements. It is an existing building and parking is being discussed and addressed in an alternate, alternate manner, so that's kind of it in a nutshell and I'll throw things over to whoever wants to keep the ball rolling.
Good evening, Marty Hackett with CLSI, it's been awhile, good to see everyone. Jeff Ziegler, one of our associates at CLSI is here also, Victoria Clausen, the owner, and then Janet Paulson is the project manager, she's sort of leading the charge here. The project that we're trying to do right now, phase one, to get Victoria in business and actually doing some venues as far as weddings and so on, is to try to get the courtyard area, and if I may, the courtyard area and the deck area, try to utilize that, she's going to be using basically temporarily, she's going to be putting the tents up and stuff like that to have events. We did this site plan, one, we had to bring the entrance up to Spanners with the State Highway Administration for a commercial entrance, as shown. We also had to, site distance, we had to lay, we're going to lay this hill back a little bit to obtain the proper site distance as you're looking to the east, to the west this way. We did everything here knowing that we can basically stay below the 5,000 square feet disturbance, which at this point keeps us from doing stormwater management, which is a key, obviously a huge expense. So, that, this is called basically phase one and obviously if we go and get involved in many more, you'll have to see a future phase, that kind of thing. We met with permits and inspections, if we, we have a venue here in the courtyard area, they did say they would allow us to, there's a couple bathrooms down there that will be actually created, where they would allow a partial view of it and where people can utilize that part of the building for the bathroom facility and then a plating, little plating room for that, the caterer to come in and have room to put stuff together and insert it. Everything's to be cooked, I mean, everything's catered and brought in and everything's taken out at every event. And stepping in with any, if I could say a little appropriate agreement. In a nutshell, that's what we're here for, it's an existing building, there's no doubt that eventually she wants to renovate the inside and have it to where she can do an event inside the place, I mean, it's, you've got a great potential. You know, I guess it was originally, over the years it was fine portrait by Michelle as the photographer and the downstairs, for instance, even the downstairs, the downstairs wasn't, it was finished off, but that's, that part was done by a permit, so she tried to bring everything into plans. And she's been meeting with the permit department, Jason Green down at building permits and everybody. And that's really what we're here for, to try to get her permission to, like I said, conduct some venues and start bringing in some revenues if she can afford to take it to the next level. Is that a fair statement?
Okay, Jim, if they put the tents, is there, what's the requirements for the tents? If they put tents up, are they required to take them down after each event? If they put tents up, are they required to do anything as far as fire code or anything else?
That's, that's something we're really going to have to work with the Bureau of Permits and Inspections on because that's, our code is silent on a temporary structure like that, so we would really have to work with the county on, on any time limitations, you know, what they would consider it to be temporary, how long a tent could stay up because I'm sure there are, you know, fire safety aspects that go beyond zoning and are more building code related, so at this point I don't have a good answer for that really.
What restrictions would we have at this point for them to move forward? Or for us to accept this as a concept plan?
They're not, they're not making food there though, none at all, there's no kitchen at this point.
Let me get this answered first.
Okay.
So, right, so if use of, use of a tent for events would be part of the initial phase, I guess we would just need to coordinate that with, with the county. I think in terms of the city zoning code, we'd want to look at the duration and frequency that the tent would be erected, you know, how, how many events if we're looking at, you know, every weekend, you know, both Saturday and Sunday or Friday through Sunday, you know, what's the frequency, would the tent come down between events? And I don't think that we have answers to those questions at this point.
How many people are we looking at? I mean, we're talking about wedding events, so you're talking like 30, 40 or we talking about 200?
If I may, one, the spread of orders comes into effect at 100 people. So, as far as the tent goes, I mean, 99 people for the tent?
For the tent? For the tent...
It's more because it's outside and it's not connected to the building.
It's not, yeah, the main thing is like, yes, you're correct, if it's not connected to the building, when we talk, when I talk to, or if it's, if the tent's set like 10 feet off the building, it's not connected, then there's no spread of requirements regardless of the amount of people you have. Not too many people spread their tents, whether it's not, you know, but as far as the duration goes, we can, we can talk about that, there's nothing as far as water and sewer, like when you're doing this stuff on farms out in the ag zone and you're doing it on septic system or then you're bringing in like potter potties and stuff like that, that's a, then they normally regulate to about 14 events a year, but that's health department issue, which is not an issue here because of the public utilities.
So, we still talking a number, still looking for a roundabout number?
I would say anywhere between like, you know, 150 to 100.
Correct, see, with the dance floor about 150, if it's something, if it's a fundraiser or something like that, there's no dance floor, then up to 100, I think that would be a number. And one more thing to add, when we had a meeting with the Tawney Town, one number that was given as the temporary structure, like a tent, is up to 130 days. So, they, they said that that's going to be an option of having a tent that would last, would stay up possibly 108 days, but again, like Jim said, this is still to be discussed.
I haven't forgotten about you, Ollie, about the food.
Well, he answered it real quick.
Okay. The, how are we going to get 150, 200 people to this tent or to this location?
Do you want to add one? Oh yeah, you know...
Would you come to, come up to the mic please?
Good evening Councilman, Janet Paulson, and I'm helping Victoria Clausen develop the property, but getting to know everybody in Tawney Town, which is really exciting, but we met the other day with Bill Jones of EVAPCO and we're excited to say that he, actually, we think this is the best idea so far as far as transporting people, is that they've even offered their shuttle service, but we're going to probably park everybody there, people would be driven in, there's going to be a little turnaround, right Marty, at the end and they'll be dropped off at this entrance into the tent area, patio area, and then they will pull out and, you know, they'll just have the shuttle service going back and forth, so we were happy with that idea.
Is that the only location you'll have?
Well, you all also have volunteered, which is wonderful too, is you have the whole downtown municipal parking too by the police department and all that if we ever wanted to use that, but EVAPCO on weekends, he's, I mean, I think that's the best alternative, I think, you know, that's, that was very generous of him and he would like to see this all, you know, happen, so that was exciting news for us, don't you agree Victoria?
Yeah, so they also offered us to use their shuttle services.
Right, exactly, the shut, well, yeah, the shuttle as well they offered, so, but we also have connections in town with shuttle services, so we feel that this is not a problem at all to address.
They will run the shuttle service.
They, they said that they, they would actually let us use their shuttle or if we prefer to have maybe a bigger shuttle or something, there's other services available within Tawney Town that I met at the networking breakfasts and all that and they're fantastic to work with.
Show me how the turnaround's going to work for the shuttle.
That's right here, it's up for a three-point turn.
Three-point turn.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not talking about a bus, we're talking about some smaller shuttle, right?
15 passenger buses.
15?
15, yeah.
That's a lot of trips.
It's a bus.
Okay, I guess.
Victoria Clausen, and I'm the owner of the Tannery Barn, so pretty much when we do events, we often work in spaces that are small where the bus is not going to fit and it's a pretty much a standard practice to hire a couple shuttles and they just go on a rotation basis, so, and we clear a lot of people, more than 200 people that way because not everybody comes at the same time and that just creates a continuous shuttle service with two of them and EVAPCO is right down the road. So, they're not going to be bringing people from Baltimore in 15 passenger buses, it's just down the road, continuous shuttle service.
Have you participated in this type of thing before?
I've been doing this type of business for almost 20 years and I've been looking for a venue, for a place to make a venue for almost three and a half years and the Tannery Barn, the property that we call the Tannery Barn caught my eye because of, well, first of all, close proximity to Antrim and I've done so many events at the Antrim and every client tells me that they want to have something more in Tawney Town, like a place to have a rehearsal dinner or brunch next day, small celebration, and this venue seemed to be perfect for that, so, and I've always wanted to have, to have a venue where I can put my years of experience in event industry to use and when we came to Tawney Town, we felt very welcomed, it feels like the community can use something like this and, you know, we're just hoping that it's going to be a really good thing for the town, not just for our business because that will help to be, for town to become a destination place, strengthen what Antrim is doing already, you know, bring more business to places like Georgia's on New York, et cetera, so we're excited about opportunities.
Will the state have to get into the traffic part of this or not?
They are, they'll be reviewing the evidence and all that.
Okay.
They're not requiring a traffic study.
Nothing like that.
Correct.
But they're requiring to take the bank back some.
Yeah, well, the regulations require, we just, we went ahead and served by this like this, and sure when we did, it came up short, so we had to lay the back and back a little bit. We don't want to achieve that.
How many bathrooms are available to us?
There are two bathrooms, well, there's right now one bathroom and there is a second one with two stalls, it's going to be put in downstairs and they all, they're, it's going to be handicap accessible. We already had an architect take a look at it and said that's not a problem. We don't even have...
Is this before you have any, any parties there, right?
Excuse me?
You're going to do this before you have any parties?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a pretty day, I feel like walking. How are you going to stop the people from walking from EVAPCO along 194 to your location?
We usually put event coordinators there, that's going to be directing them to the shuttles.
Because there's a pretty good distance and yet I can see people wanting to walk and I'm concerned with safety there.
To be honest with you, being in this business for so many years, I've never seen people walk in when there's shuttle service available, but that's...
Okay.
Ladies in heels and after events, you know, after a couple drinks, whatever, we haven't seen that happening.
Yeah, the same ladies, I've noticed after a couple drinks and a little dancing, those heels come off.
What parties do you go to?
The ones we have fun.
I see a side of you I've never seen before. A quick question, under what use are we looking at this Jim? I mean, looking at the uses for downtown business, I don't see where it fits. I'm sure we could stretch it, but it seems like a far stretch for what's here.
There are a couple uses in the downtown business district that I think this could comfortably fit in, let me just find the line items real quick. Let's see, we've got community meeting halls and we also have, let's see, private, social clubs, fraternal organizations and community meeting halls is one, we have private assembly halls is another, which I think is really what this would fit under.
That's about what it is.
Back to the food, the food's going to be catered in and all the trash, paper products is going to be transported away from the site.
Correct.
So, it won't be used from the town as far as the town trash pickup?
Correct. When we do events, that's pretty much always the rule, as a florist, I always take my trash out, as a caterer, they all take their trash out.
Your commercial people have to do their own dumpster anyway.
That's what I want to make sure, as taxpayers, I didn't want the taxpayers picking up the tab for the extra...
That's pretty much nine through 10.
Correct.
Because I didn't see a spot in here where a dumpster, dump truck, one of those garbage trucks can come in and pick up a dumpster.
We just didn't feel like it's needed for the venue the way we have it because there's no trash generating activity, so to speak, happening.
Then again, tonight, we're just looking at a concept plan tonight.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Jim, you have something else to add?
No, if, if the commission is comfortable granting concept approval, they can move on with the preliminary step and then distribute that to the various review agencies, there's not a huge amount of work going on with the site, so the review might be somewhat limited at the county level, but, you know, if you're comfortable with what you see, we can let them move on to the next step.
What timeframe are we looking at?
Soon as possible, tomorrow.
How soon is for you to, for open for business?
We would love to open this summer.
This, this summer?
Yes, absolutely, we would love to open, we physically in terms of improvements, bathrooms, et cetera, we are ready to be done by the end of June and open in July.
When you have a 200-person affair and it's all over, how many shuttles will you be running to get those people back out to...
There's still going to be two shuttles, it's enough because people don't leave at the same time, sometimes we have to really kick them out.
But if you have some sort of a convention or a meeting or something, when you dismiss everything at one time, they're all going to be leaving at one time.
I mean, it's scalable, for sure, we're going to treat it on an event, per event basis, whatever the needs are.
Is the access to this, is that on a curve? That's on sort of a hill there, isn't it?
Agreed, you know...
Agreed.
Yeah, it's just down.
No safety problems going to be involved with it?
That's why we're laying the hill back.
Okay.
Just like this, we're working the hill back, it achieves the site distance back and that site distance is set up through Rastow and it's, you actually got to design it based on 10 mile an hour.
Well, this is going to be nightlife, huh? Nightlife?
Be nice to do...
Well, events ending at around 10, 10:30?
I knew at rush hour that it's backed up from the square down through there.
Correct, correct, it's usually going to be the opposite time than, you know, the traffic, so, yes, because it's usually weekends and evenings.
I mean, the good news would be that she could book an event Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Right, right.
So, I mean, that's the goal, that's for her to conduct business, so it's one of those things, Saturdays in some of these rush hours not really an issue.
No.
Friday nights, if you had an event at 7 o'clock, 7 to 11 or something like that, 7 o'clock's toward the end of the rush hour, that kind of thing, so, but, that thing, but she certainly, she wants to book the thing even if there's people that want to do a, you know, it could be a retirement luncheon or something, have a caterer during the week, it could be a, you know, luncheon, so the goal is for her to book that, book EVAPCO.
Should I speak on some...
Pardon me? I think so, I think so.
I want you to understand what I've done in the past too, I'll be the general manager of the property, I'm helping to develop it. For the past 10 years, I was a Greenspring Racquet Club, I was the general manager there and also before that, I was at the Brass Elephant in Baltimore, so I'm very familiar with events and catering and safety. And one of the things is, as general manager, I make sure everybody's safe in the building, right? And my job is, is that I'm not going to let people walk out, just like I did at a tennis club when I had events with 200 young kids, they had to stay inside because there was a big parking lot, keep people going to run around like crazy. So, I always have a team of people I work with and when I do an event like that, we will always have a team and we will not let just people run crazy like you're saying, like up and down streets and stuff. If I can handle kids that are the ages of 18 and under, I can definitely handle adults, which I have done, like I said, at the Brass Elephant and at other venues that I have done catering events for, but I am actually an event planner for that reason, so, and that's why she's also hired me, right?
Correct, we bring a lot of experienced diversity. We bring a lot of experience, diverse experience here. It's not going to be a test project for us. We really want to, we're serious about making it right, not just for us, but for the town as well.
Any other questions?
I just, I want to say to the commission, you know, under downtown business district, it says specifically, "The permitted use should generate low vehicular traffic with minimum vehicular parking needs and create few objectionable influences for nearby neighbors." The whole concept here relies on vehicular traffic. Not only that, the concept relies on the gratitude of another business. If that gratitude runs out, what's the backup plan? To then bring the shuttles through downtown proper to use the other parking lots. I-
Let me interrupt you just a first-
Go ahead.
Jay, do you think we would need a letter, something from Evapco? I mean, everything's based on what, what they're saying here.
Right.
A letter from Evapco with the understanding that they're going to be using their property for-
I mean, I think that what you're going to need for this commission is that you're going to need something that shows that in the file that that's been done. But long-term, in other places, they do something, it's just in writing, but they give it a license agreement, saying, you know, you have the right to do this. It's not very, it's like a one-page deal, you have the right to do this. That way, if powers change, they say, hey, we still have a right to do it, and there's a way to get out of it. Other places do it a little bit more formal with an easement arrangement, but nobody likes doing that, because that really ties up the property. So, that would be something that the applicant would probably want to do on their own.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
But as far as your file goes, I mean, if they follow up and say, yeah, Evapco is okay with this, it covers the fact that the testimonies in the file as well.
And where would you draw these 200 people from?
Where? We're going to market it to Baltimore DC area.
Okay, you're, you're following Antrim out here and-
Local people, so pretty much we'd love to be-
They draw their people from away, too.
Whoever wants to, whoever loves their place and wants to come, absolutely.
Yep.
You can't really specify where people are coming from when they have an event like this anyhow. I mean, you, you're going to have a good event, but you're, you can't say you can't come from Baltimore or anything else. It's wherever they come.
Yep.
People could be coming from California, family at the wedding.
And that's something you can't say.
And that's where it generates the need for, you know, the other thing, people stay in the area, they use the restaurants, they use the hotels, they use the bed and breakfasts.
Everything, it's a win-win situation for all businesses.
Now, there's probably a time limit on fireworks. We've had problems with fireworks in Tonny Town.
Tremendous problems.
Well, we don't really have room for fireworks, to be honest with you, even if we wanted to. We don't have room for fireworks. So I think that you can rest assured that we're not going to go into that area.
Okay, so aside from fireworks, there are residences on either side of this property. What are your noise abatement policies? How are you not going to bother them with the noise?
We, we talked, we talked to people, yes, absolutely. This was one of the first things we've done.
Exactly, I met with Janet and Steve Stegley, right? I always forget their last name, but they're lovely. And they were saying, too, that they, they understand that there'll be music and all that. So I've talked to the neighbors, and everybody is okay about it. But usually, I believe in Tonny Town, isn't there a noise ordinance around 10, 10:00 PM? I think other towns are, so we're, we're sort of going to follow the same rule of the Antrim. I think it's like 10 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, I read on their website.
Well, Antrim follows their own rules, because they woke me up at 11:30 at night with music, and I live a mile away from them.
Well.
So, that's my concern, because these things get out of control very quickly.
Well, as I said, if I can manage a bunch of high school students, I think I can manage, as I have in the past, weddings, I, I can have a clean record at the Brass Elephant and all that. My job as a general manager is the safety and the well-being of everybody in that building, and also our neighbors. And that's something that's really important to me, and that's why I went over there, and I met with everybody and shook everybody's hand, because we all have our word, and that's all I, my reputation is my word. So I'm sorry that they didn't follow the rules for that situation, but, you know, my job is to really make sure that that doesn't happen, so, and that's what my job is to do.
I understand that our venue is different than Angel Angel's and the one, like, we are outside of the tent, if it's going to be a tented event, so the noise ordinance is a totally different issue. And that's why when we talk to the neighbors, we didn't go to them and say, this is what we're doing. We went to them and said, this is what we want to do, do you have any objections? So, we're totally prepared to have a set schedule of, you know, event has to be over, like the music has to be over by whatever, 10 o'clock, et cetera. So, we totally realize that.
And if a bad thunderstorm comes up in the middle of your 200-person affair going on out there in a tent?
Well, the tent is one of the, the only company that we're going to be using is a company that I've used for 20 years, that tested and tried, and that tent stood through hurricanes and thunderstorms. So, this is not something that I'm going to experiment, as much as we love to use as many people as possible from the community, but this is one of the vendor that to me it's critical to use, with a huge experience, tremendous experience, and my personal trust, so. I don't, I don't have concern about that.
Anything else? Jim, do we want to be concerned or anything about the sidewalk easement coming into town? Cut that bank back, that would be a time to think about something for a sidewalk. I know there's, there's that house and the, where the doctor's office used to be, there isn't any, but across the street where the church, there's a sidewalk.
I think sidewalk stops at the entrance to what used to be the doctor's office. So, you know, ultimately, certainly, we'd like to see that connect, so an easement would certainly be, I think, appropriate.
We don't have any problems with that.
Yeah, we always ask for an easement.
Right, well, I wanted to make sure we got that noted, so. All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for approval for a concept plan?
I'll make a motion for an easement for a concept plan for the Tannery Barn.
I'm not looking for the easement, I'm looking for, for a concept, for approval of a concept plan for the whole site.
All right, I'll make a, so move.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Help you not.
I'll second it.
Okay, no any further discussion? Is there any comments from the floor?
I honestly have a hard time seeing this fit in with the downtown. It seems like-
I think it's going to be good for downtown, it's going to help more than just that one barn. It's going to bring more business to the downtown that the downtown needs.
How?
Take a walk down to the middle of Tonny Town on Saturday or Sunday.
I mean, there's no safe way to get there.
This has got to bring business, this has got to bring people.
There's no safe way for them to get there.
From down there, they could walk.
I said safe.
We don't have a sidewalk.
That's the only one place we don't have a sidewalk.
Well, there's three properties that don't have a sidewalk. It's a pretty long distance.
With all due respect, can I interject a little bit? So, if people come to the events-
Excuse me?
When people go to event at the barn, right? They're going to be driving there for the event, per se. They're not staying at the barn, so there is no need for them to walk from the barn into the town. So most likely, they're going to be staying at the Antrim, or Georges on York, or any other places. So, they will be able to enjoy the downtown without it. And with us to show our commitment and understanding what the town needs, we actually opened a flower shop across the street right now, to not just service the events, it's going to be the Tannery Barn, but also bring something else, like a destination place for people to come to town, you know, to shop for not just fresh flowers, but gifts and, you know, plants, et cetera. So, and we were very much discussing that aspect of accessibility, and we decided not have the flower shop at the barn, for that particular reason, and have it on the main street. And so we're going to be renting space, 14 East Baltimore, exactly across the street, to, to have easy accessibility for people. But when the people come to the barn, it's pretty much event-based. They get in to the parking lot, they get in the shuttle, come to the barn, come out, the same, there's no, I don't anticipate any walking around, so.
Mr. Reed, you want to come up?
Victoria kind of summed it up, but Keith Reed? I just wanted to say that, you know, as far as when the event is, for helping the downtown, when the event is over, the shuttle is going to take them back to their cars. And in their car, they will come to downtown, they'll park in a parking lot. So I don't think it's a safety issue of people walking from the event space, they're going to go back to, in the shuttle, they're going to get in their car, and they're going to come over here and stay at this wonderful event at Georges on York. They're going to go wherever else they can stop downtown, they can go to Easy Does It and have dinner, or whatever. So I don't think safety of getting from the event space to downtown should be a concern at all. And I think it will be a wonderful thing to, it's, you know, to attract people into the town. We need, we need new and additional and exciting things in the town. We're trying, you know, working to make the town better, and I think this is, would be a great addition to the town. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, all of those in favor of approval of the concept site plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Keith. He's in favor of it.
It'll be a giant disruption to downtown, but whatever. Just saying.
You can't have all closed places in town.
All right. Jim, back up to your, your planning zoning report.
Okay, we already touched on the first couple of things, so I'm not going to reread what we've already talked about. Beddowbrook Phase 5 is experiencing some delays at the county. The milars have not made it to the city yet. And if CLSI was still here, I might have floated the question, but apparently, they're having trouble getting the, the necessary electronic files through to development review and to the legal processing folks at the county. So, until they get this electronic file, they won't release the milars for circulation. So, I know Dick Hall, the developer, is very frustrated with the delay, but there, he's trying to get the milars signed and get things moving out there. So they are, they are working to get that.
Isn't this the group that we give them the concept, or give them pre-approval based on-
Conditionary.
Conditionary approval, yeah. And they still don't have it? Is that what you're saying?
No, they, they have the, they got, all the approval letters came through. That came through very shortly after the meeting, where we granted the conditional approval. After approval is granted, there are a number of items that have to be addressed before a grading permit is issued. They need to execute their public works agreement and post surety, and the developers have been working with Jay on, on those things. And milar prints of the construction drawings and recordation plaits have to be circulated for signatures. So typically, we try to be the last agency to sign, so by the time it gets to us, you know, if, if necessary, it would have county signatures, it'll have health department signature, and, and then we sign it, chairman, myself, and the mayor typically sign the milar copies. But before that, before those copies can be circulated, before the county will release them for circulation, they need, they require the engineer to provide an electronic copy of all the drawings. And they've been having some technical issues with getting that file to the county and the county being able to read it. So I, I don't know the, the details of it, but that has, the, that's part of the county's process, so until they get this file and they can open it and be sure they've got the right thing, they won't let the milars go out the door for signatures. So, I know the developer has been following up with the county regularly, and, and as well as the engineer, to try to figure out what the problem is with this file. But, you know, as of at least this morning, that's where it stood. So I, I'll be following up with the county tomorrow to see if there's any, any new information, or try to find out a little bit more about what the problem exactly is. But at any rate, the, they are trying to move forward with that. I know that with the weather being warmer now, I know he wants to get out there and start pushing dirt around, so. So hopefully, by our next meeting, they'll, that will be, the milars will be signed, and the grading permit will be approved, hopefully before our main meeting. We had another meeting with the Sewells who own the tree farm on Harney Road, and they are still interested in a senior community. We met with them this morning, and they talked about possibly using the, and they have property on both sides of Harney Road. The majority is on the west side, but they do have a smaller amount on the east side, and they were looking at possibly doing a 55 and older type community on the larger part of the farm, and doing more of the assisted living piece on the smaller side of Harney Road. At this point, they just have a very basic concept of how the property might be laid out. Their next step will be to approach the mayor and council to see what the appetite is for the city to annex the additional property. They are obviously within our growth area, but when they approached the city several years ago, there was not much appetite for annexing additional residential property. At the time, I think it was proposed that they would just do a basic standard subdivision. So the age restricted community is something a little different than, than the plan that they had, I guess, six or seven years ago. So, that's still in the works, and by the next time we meet, they will have presented to the mayor and council, just to get a feel for the mayor and council's appetite for annexing the property. You know, if, if that goes well, then we'll be looking for a concept in, you know, in the near future.
Have you seen anything on that? Have you seen any kind of a concept plan at all?
They, they shared a, just kind of a sketch plan this morning.
The whole farm?
The majority of it.
The most, most of the farm?
The wooded area to the west would remain open space, and, you know, it may actually be conserved as well, under a conservation easement, possibly.
Are they going to have individual homes?
They're talking about a mixture of single-family homes, villas, or like quad, quadruplex units, potentially, even if, if, if their marketing, you know, research looks like it's feasible, possibly even a condominium-type building, you know, maybe not of the scale that Carol Vista had originally proposed, but something of that nature, perhaps a three-story building. And the idea in the concept was to use basically the site where the existing barn and farmhouse are, that are kind of on a knoll, as the area for the clubhouse, you know, very, very similar to the Carol Vista model, except instead of the clubhouse being right at the entrance, they thought that it would be ideal to put it up on the knoll where it would be kind of the dominant feature you would see from the street, but then having some housing between the street and the clubhouse. So, and again, that was just a, a quick sketch plan that they had laid out.
Well, I, I guess I shouldn't be asking any questions because it's too early, but if you have assisted living, you're going to need a large building of some sort, maybe two stories, they don't usually go over two stories on those things. But he's got that in mind, too?
And, and they're still talking about that. I think the, the architect that came with them today was more focused on the, the residential end of it, as opposed to the assisted living. But again, we'll, we'll have to see what-
So apparently, it's going to be on the line of a Plumcrick in Hanover, or something like that, maybe?
Or like Littlestam, well.
That, that project was mentioned.
Plumcrick? I have an idea, we'd probably file something like that.
So there was, you know, they've, they've done some review of, of, of communities like Carol- Carol Lutheran Village and Plum Creek. And I, I'm drawing a blank on the, one in Frederick County as well that I, I don't recall the name of. But they'll be seeing how the mayor and council feel about annexation at the, at the May workshop. They should be on the agenda for that, that next workshop. So by the next time we meet, we'll have an idea if annexation is in the, in the cards or not for this one.
Well, that's a project that we need many more of, that type of a project.
Right, so, you know, there, there certainly are some potential benefits to it developing as that age restricted community, you know, as far as while our schools in this area, you know, are currently showing declining enrollment, you know, this, this, so it's not an immediate concern, but this won't impact, you know, school, school construction, school costs. Tends to have a lower water and sewer demand per unit than a typical household does. As, and that's been proven out at the Carol Vista community.
But it will tax the fire department.
Right. And that's, that's the downside is there may be more EMS.
EMS issues.
Right, so.
Got a lot of them now.
I know.
Right, probably not more fire necessarily, but certainly more EMS activity, yeah. So, so that is still in the works. And last month, we talked about the building that's been employed out at Rob's Tower Motors. And he was supposedly going to drop off a concept site plan. That hasn't happened yet. So hopefully, we will have that by next meeting. I've been in touch with the property manager for the property at Tevis Oil, who owns the property. And, you know, they certainly, it's in their interest to see the operator comply. So we will see what they present hopefully next month.
But it's already there.
It's already well-used.
It's, it's there. They are explaining, his explanation has been that, that they've, they're using it to roll equipment into it and store the equipment so they can use the last bay in the building that had been more of a storage area. Because the explanation was their business has picked up and they have another fleet of vehicles they're maintaining now. And they needed to employ the last bay of the building. And to do that, they had to get some equipment out of the way. And that's what they're using the building for. So we'll, we'll see what they, what kind of plan they present. We know that, that CLSI does have the, the property in their database already from the last time that Rob came before the commission for the, the used car operation and the shed sales. So they have a base drawing in there already. So it probably won't be a big to-do for them to incorporate the shed into that. But that, that's where we are on it right now. So, so we've been in contact with them and they've advised, they intend to comply. But again, we didn't get a, a site plan submitted yet. So hopefully, we will have one next month. And if not, then we'll get the county to give them a, a stop, you know, an order to stop using the building.
Right. Sid for electrical permit.
The electric won't vote, yeah.
Uh, let's see. Last thing I had on the report was just so far, we had two new homes in the Meadowbrook community. And we haven't had any more since the, since I printed the report out.
Where are we with the group home on this side street up here? Is that, you kind of U and O yet on that?
Yes.
It's being used. I mean, it's filled up.
It's, yep. They've gotten the U and O. The, the builder was on site last week, just, I think they may have had some punch list items. And the, the lawn was installed or seeded, I guess, a few, couple of weeks ago. So, but it's, they were, they were actually, the building had a U and O, but they still had some, they were holding off on putting, installing the lattice on the front porch until the final grading and the seeding on the lawn was, was taken care of. So the, the builder was back out at the site now that the seeding was, was taken care of, just to do those last few trim items. So.
Is there parking three cars on the road a new normal out there? Because it actually makes that road a little more treacherous now, Westview.
There have been a number of cars parked on the street from the adjacent dwelling or the nearest dwelling pretty frequently. I don't know if, if there are parking cars on the street specific for the, for the new home or not.
Right, well, they're parked right in front of it, so I assume it's, but when you have cars on this side, cars on that side, and then people coming down the hill and people trying to go up the hill, there's, there's no room anymore on that street. I mean, they have a nice big driveway that they put one car in.
They put three cars in the back of that driveway. It's a little wider in the back than it is in the front.
I mean, the, the driveway certainly meets the parking requirements.
And they park some on the street.
But as to, you know, if, if, if the caretaker chooses to park on the street instead of in the driveway, that's, that's their prerogative, really. Just like in any other residential community, you know, a lot of folks park on the street instead of their, their driveway. Or they've got, you know, the garage filled with other stuff and.
Right, we, we just need to be mindful in that area, so there's other properties for sale there.
Right.
That, that road gets clogged quickly.
Yeah. And certainly, if it, if it does come down to it being a, a safety concern, we can always revisit parking, you know, on Westview and restrict it to one side if, if need be. I, I think, I, I think dimensionally, it's wide enough to accommodate parking on both sides and two-way traffic, although certainly it would slow down the traffic.
It's tight two-way traffic.
Slow down the two-way traffic if, if cars are parked on both sides.
I know the other day when I was coming back from Gettysburg and I took that road, I had to pull off because of a car coming down. And granted, they weren't yielding half of the street to anybody, but that's the problem.
And that's, right. And that's an issue throughout the city where there's not a center line painted on the streets.
Right.
That oftentimes, you know, an oncoming car to avoid parked cars will cross well into the oncoming lane, giving a more than, much more than adequate margin of safety to the parked car, but not to the oncoming car. And that's a.
Well, there was talk of a sewer project out on Westview, is that correct? Do you, do you recall that, Jay?
Harney Road, Westview, that area.
Okay. So maybe it's a thought to stripe that road when they do that.
That's the same. I think, yeah. But I, I think that was just marginally talked about. There's been no action.
I, I think there have been a lot of breaks. I think, I think it may have been the water line out on Westview Drive, I think has had a number of breaks. So that is something that Public Works would like to.
Right. Say, if we're out there disturbing the road, let's splatter some yellow paint on it at the same time, but.
But I mean, it needs to, that project needs to be done, but I haven't seen it take traction.
Wait till we get 150 townhouses out here. Then you're going to see crowded roads with no streets wide enough.
Well, I meant maybe, I, I was talking about the water.
I know what you're talking about.
The water project part has to happen at some.
Okay. Okay, Jim, go ahead. Have you finished yours? You're not finished yours yet, right?
I mean, if, I don't really have a lot of new info under the active projects that we haven't already touched on.
How about the George property? How are they coming on that?
I have not heard anything from them recently. To, to look at the site, they, I don't know if they've seeded. If they have seeded, the lawn has not become established yet. But they, it looks like they have completed the fine grading of the site. Blacktop has not been, has not gone down yet, although they've certainly tidied up the, the limits of the parking and driveway area. But they still have a ways to go.
And they did say there was going to be a new fence there in the back, right? Am I correct on that, guys?
I will check the plan. I think the plan called for moving the fence in or relocating the fence. I don't know, I don't recall without looking at the plan if it was a new fence or just relocating the fence farther off the alley. But I, I will check on that and let you know next time.
All right. Jay?
I'm going to dovetail into just some other statuses with the projects is that Meads Crossing, he talked about how number five, they're running into some issues, like just administrative issues. We did do all the public works agreements and, I mean, that's all done. So it's just administrative stuff. But we're actually seeing closure on Meads Crossing 4A. So we're going to be before the council on this coming meeting cycle to ask for acceptance for 4A.
Meads Crossing or Meadowbrook?
I knew, I knew where you were.
Which, yeah.
I messed you up.
So the, the issue with Meadowbrook 4A, the interesting thing is why I find it, it's the first time since I've been here that we've done an acceptance, when you think about. Carol Vista was private, Creekside still hasn't been done. The old Meadowbrooks were prior to that. So we're going to do an acceptance for the first time and we're kind of developing a little process for it. And Dick Hall's been good about getting things done. They had the punch list inspection last week because we had targeted the day, it was April 15th, and then that winter would be over. So they did the punch list inspection, they fixed the stuff that week. Our public works department was happy with everything that needed to be happening. So we're going to have an acceptance and we'll be owning 4A and maintaining that from then. So that's what's going on with that. 4B will be the next one, but they're not ready for that. And then five, section five is going to have two phases, but they're both section five, meaning that they're going to record everything at once, but they're going to do like two-thirds of it at one time and they're going to do the other third later. And we, we're okay because they're all recorded, it's just that they're going to post surety at different times to keep the law going. So that's the story. Meads Crossing did come in and talk to us about moving forward, getting the inspector online, and we worked that out. The city has its own inspector out there making sure that it's being done the way it's supposed to be done by the plans. They, they made some, they made some overtures to say that they still know they need to come back before you to have some things approved and things like that. But they are actually going to be moving dirt and moving ahead. I forget what he said, something was going to happen by the end of August or September.
Looks like they're moving dirt now.
Yeah, but they stopped because of the, the weather. And then they said they're going to have a lot of crews, but I guess buildable lots by the end of the summer, whenever that would be. And then the next project that the city is going to go on is their, city manager wants to do a comprehensive review of the city code and charter. So he's talked to the council about that. And there's a internal committee that they're going to set up to do this. And the only reason I'm bringing that to your attention is that you deal with the highly technical portions of this. Jim does, is the one in the staff. But this is your time, that if you have any issues with, you don't even need to give me like a specific citation, but if you have one saying, we don't like this, or this works terrible, or whatever. Or if you say, hey, we really would like to think about something, this would be the time to bring it up because the committee's going to go section by section by section. And, you know, it's not going to go back, so it's, it gets through. The plan is like, for example, when you get to like zoning, Jim's going to be in charge of that and come into the committee and saying, this works well, this doesn't work well, this needs to be changed. But there's going to be a lot of things where the committee's just going to look at. So think about it, this is not a month-long project. You know, this is, if we get it done by the end of the year, we'll be happy to do that. But this is the renovation of the code. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything that can be done in the future about that one house on every street that just doesn't put anything away anymore and just lets junk around, set around, actually is an eyesore? Is there anything we can do about something like that?
About like junk and stuff, yes. We don't have to do much. I know Jim takes a pretty aggressive stance on many of the things. A lot of it depends on where it is and what it is. If it's truly junk and it's away and laying in the yard, we've gone in and we've taken it and had it thrown away and build the people. If it's on the person's house, like on their porch and we're close to the house, it gives us a lot more concern of just going and taking it. You know, the example I use is I have my snow blower on my front porch during the winter. It didn't look very well, but it wasn't junk.
Yeah, right. I didn't mean that.
Yeah, I know, but the question becomes, that's what they'll say to us when we take it. So those require us, if we're going to do it, to either work with them or take them to court so that the judge can say, you got to do it, you got to move it. So those things exist if it's junk. If it's the condition of the house itself, like the ones we've seen around, those, we can do things when they're code violations. But when there aren't any code violations and it still looks terrible, like a house up the street this way, then we got to be a little bit more aggressive and you may have to change the code.
Well, I talked to a person on Carol Heights. I said, how's the world treating you? Oh, man. It's awful out there now. Used to be all old people you knew out there and everybody was spitting polish. But now, there's people that let their garbage cans set out for two days after the garbage man comes or other things that just starting to collect around houses. And they're quite upset because it's a real nice area.
Do they contact the city? I mean.
I don't think so.
I mean, while, I don't want to create more work, we only know it if they call in. And a lot of times, you know, Jim follows up on every call. So that if they called in and say, we have problems with these neighbors, the trashcans are out all the time, maybe there's something that can be done.
I like to point out another one, down back of the funeral director.
Yes.
L, who owns that?
Peters.
Yeah, I know. That is terrible. It's, that is trash. It's a junkyard. That should not be in this town.
Is that in the fenced-in area?
It's not, that one's not fenced in. It's behind the big.
And, you know, the funeral director wants to build back in there and it just detracts from everything.
Well, all, there are things that can be done.
There's one in every, every community.
And George, to, I guess, respond to that, that's, a lot of those sort of things are covered in the health and sanitation chapter. And there is some very broad language about every property being maintained in a clean and sanitary condition, free of any rubbish and refuse. And typically, we pursue complaints. And the ones that really get the focus are the worst of the worst ones. But frankly, I could probably, if I had the opportunity to actually go out and patrol, and, and oftentimes, I will go out to respond to a complaint and come back with three cases because I go to the property that somebody was complaining about and then I see stuff, you know, two doors up on either side that's also a violation. So I come back, you know, from one complaint with three new cases. And, and in a lot of cases, I send the letters out, people clean it up and case closed and I never deal with that property again. But there are those properties that you send the letter out and they might contact us and say, well, I'm working on it. And, and they clean it up some and then you take the pressure off and then it kind of reverts back to the way it was. There are a lot of those in the city.
I'm not trying to point fingers, fingers or anything like that by bringing this up, but we have a lot of those places around town that are eyesores.
What, what would really be a, a great help in that area would be to have a process that follows us issuing a letter. If, if a police officer writes a citation and the individual doesn't pay the citation, there's a court date and it goes to court. We don't have anything like that unless, and, and Jay is working with me on one right now that is one of those that has affected neighboring properties and has not complied. And they've gotten letters, they've gotten fines, and it's still frankly, a, a health concern for the immediate neighbors as well as the residents. So we have gone to mayor and council and are pursuing legal action on that one through the court system. But that's really not something we do frequently. So, you know, that's, that's where we, that's what we have to do. It takes a lot of Jay's time and as well as mine when it gets to that level. But it's unusual for us to have a case that's that, that serious that we take it that far. But it's unusual for us to have a case that's that, that serious that we take it that far.
And, and you need to voice your concerns as citizens mostly, to the mayor and council because the one case that Jim's talking about, so we can't just go to court, you know, even though he sees it, I gotta get the mayor and council to agree, we are going to go sue this person. And I get, there's resistance, there's resistance for lots of different reasons, because they have to pay the bills and they gotta look at all this, but it's not as simple as the police officer who is expected, when he writes a ticket, it ends up being solved. And in the case with the health violation, you know, there, these cases are the worst of the worst, though they're not quick solutions. There are, once you bite off a piece, you might own the whole pie type of thing, so. I had one more thing to add while we sat here, totally now going back to my report, is the Roberts Mill Stormwater Pond. I don't know, we didn't really talk about that, but we did bring it up before, and we had an internal meeting about it. You know, that's the county project, the stormwater pond. If the council, our city council, funds, which they, it's in the budget, the, the budget item, we will be building the bridge, the Obion Bridge will be built as part of this project, and it's, the county's doing all the work around, county's paying for the abutments, and the city's paying for the bridge and the roads to go down into it and things like that, so. And that's gonna happen sooner than later, because there are monies that they have to spend this year to make that happen.
What's wrong with the pond out, what's wrong with the pond out at Bond?
Nothing's wrong with it, the new laws now require you to treat so much more, so, and this is non-scientific, but by renovating the pond and making it a partially wet pond and making the capacity bigger and making the holding time bigger and all that stuff, they can meet the new state requirements for a whole bunch of areas around us. And the city is part of the group of all the cities and counties that says, "We wanna meet what's called the NPDS Phase Two permits."
But never any water in that pond.
Well, they're gonna make it, they're gonna make it so that creek does dam up and make the bottom wet and the sides, and Jim's, this is not necessarily his baby, but he's been watching it born, I guess. But by doing this, and the county is paying for all of that, and that solves our impermeable surface issue in the town, that's the reason why. See, I listened to you. Yeah, see? That's all.
Orson?
Uh, just two small things, Congress has been working diligently on the bike pad report. Chapters three and four has been approved by the planning commission, and as far as the Freedom Plan goes, it's been approved by the planning commission and is currently going under a 60-day review. And that's, that's it as far as county updates go.
Thank you. And I'll get that signed so you can take it today, this evening, right? We'll sign that other letter. All right, we already talked about Rob's Motors, so, anyone else have anything? Before we talk about the next meeting, I guess maybe like May the 21st? Does that, how's that look?
Suits me.
Jim, Ollie?
Yeah.
May 21st? Rabbit?
Oh, I do have one more thing to add, and I hadn't put it on my report, but the, the, I guess, image that I put up on the table there for Evapco, we didn't, didn't have time to post the site two weeks before the meeting for this, but they would like to build a retaining wall next to the pump house that they built several years ago, for which we waived a site plan requirement because it was such a small structure. They would like to build a retaining wall adjacent to that, and atop the retaining wall will be a steel framework that's gonna be part of their, their testing lab, is my understanding. They'll be here next, next month to look at, looking for a waiver of the site plan approval process. Looks like the impervious area that they're gonna be adding is roughly 1,000 square feet. And I would like to have them work with DDC, their engineer, who has done their last couple site plans and stormwater plans, to assure us that the existing stormwater facility can accommodate that additional impervious area. But if, if anybody has immediate concerns that I can take back to them, you know, I'd love to have, have that to share with them now, you know, if, if nobody, no, you know, red lights go off or anything in your minds for the idea of waiving a site plan requirement for it, you know, I'll give them that feedback as well. And we may, we may let them apply for, but not approve their permit, their building permits at the county so that they can get review underway, but then, but we wouldn't sign off until after the planning commission would take some formal action next month. But that way they could get the review process as far as the, you know, construction of the wall, get that review underway, so that hopefully they can still meet their, their timeline.
Is there anything we need from them? I mean, they pretty much.
Well, I guess the folks that were here earlier need something from them, but.
Well, that's not for us.
Right, that, we'll let that between them.
Well, I mean, I think we worked well together.
I, I think.
On our new building, and I think we met your timeline.
They even fixed their driveway out there and all.
Yep.
When, yeah, I mean, Evapco is, is one of those players that, when they say they're going to do something, I think we can rely on them to do it. And I, I cannot think of an instance where they did not follow through with what they said they were gonna do. So I'm, I'm very comfortable, you know, trying to be as flexible as we can be to, you know, to accommodate their timelines when, when we can.
Sounds good. George, you have any?
No.
Ready? Jim, Ollie? Okay, then the meeting, next one's May the 21st, and I'll entertain a motion for here.
Set a move.
Exactly.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Aye.
Aye.